Guys, we'll call a meeting to order. Everybody's here except for Heidi.
Heidi has a commitment, she will not be here today.
Any additions to the agenda? I know that there's a subtraction, number four underneath informational reports. We will discard that one.
Yep, there will not be that. And there's also number two is to discuss the Painesville area schools partnering with the Painesville area foundation for the 2017 gala. So, just a discussion on that as an addition.
How many motions are out the agendas?
Second. I got a motion from Bruce and a second from Rick. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Approve and correct the minutes from the May ninth, 2017 reviser meeting. It was in your packet.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes.
A second.
Yeah, a motion from Bruce and a second from Cheryl. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Financial reports, we have the April 2017 Treasury report, that was in your packet. Bob?
Yeah, from my point, really no changes. It's really working out the way that it's projected, so there are not, no items that, at least I did, and I know that Cheryl, I think, looked at items today too.
Yep.
She didn't find any extra money anywhere?
No extra money.
Really not. Really not.
Okay.
But no less money.
No less money, that's probably even better yet. So I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the financial reports.
Who?
Motion from Rick.
Second.
Second from Randy. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Add an approval of the bills, we have additional April 2017 bills and the May 2017 bills. And Cheryl, I'm sure you've had the opportunity to look at them.
Yes, I did. Nothing out of the ordinary, everything that's been pre-approved and looked at. I did note that we didn't pay for the suite assessments, was $12,000. The public does know we have to pay for that type of stuff, so it comes out of the budget.
Where were those assessments from? How long was that?
Last year, when they put in the road, along the elementary school, the two sides.
Oh, the elementary, that's right.
Yeah, we also paid a local vendor some money for sidewalks. We replaced some of the sidewalks at the same time.
And that was not covered in the $12,000?
We had already paid that last time.
And I noted that the speakers got put in the auditorium. Are they up already? The new speakers in the auditorium, don't know? Okay, but that is being covered, I believe, by Matt's budget?
I think either, yeah, I think Matt's budget covered those, or the Arts Council may have done it. Where I think about it, I think Matt mentioned that the Arts Council did.
Either way, I just, it was nice to see that they were in there, so that, you know, if there's a bill for them, then they're here. That's a good thing. And that's really all I really noted, but everything was normal and ordinary. I would make a motion that we approve the bills.
So I got a motion from Cheryl.
Second.
Second from Lou. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Consent agenda, we just have one underneath consent agenda. Review and consider authorization of the following: 2016-17 school year career increments. So we have a 25-year increment for Jeff Youngs, 25-year for Donnie Mayer, and a 30-year for Jane Rupert. So 30 years, that's, yes.
It's a lot of years there.
That's an outstanding though.
Yep. And this is by contracts, so...
I move to authorizes.
I got a motion from Cheryl.
Second.
Second from Rick. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Move on to business. Review and consider, review first reading of the revised 2016-17 budget.
Yeah, this is the first reading of the revised budget. It will come to the board again at the next meeting, first meeting in June for approval. We'll get, certainly if there are any questions, you can either ask me tonight, or just give me a call before the next meeting. As you can see, if we just take a look, and we'll start working our way down for the general fund, there are some changes both on the revenue and on the expenditure size. Those are mainly caused because at the time of this budget, we didn't have QCOM dollars in there. And that was about $150,000, the CEIS grant was another $26,000. Then there, we got some additional revenue for special ed, usually that. All these things that I'm mentioning, they come in, but then they go out. So they're going to be on both sides of the ledger. Title, we got a little bit more money on the other side. Again, QCOM comes in, QCOM goes out. The CES grant comes in, goes out. We, over the course of the year, we also hired some additional pairs, that was part of it, about 1.5 pairs, and some special ed curriculum we paid for and some of those things. So that's really what the main differences for that are. For the food service, there's some changes. That change on the revenue side is really kind of our summer program. And again, that's on both sides of it. We're getting some money coming in for the summer food program, but we also have money leaving for the summer food program. And then also on the expenditure side, if you remember, we paid for an oven. They are not cheap. So, but I think the food service people have been really happy. It's kind of a double oven instead of the one that we lost. They've been able to do some things, I think, I think the students have mentioned the hamburgers, because they have that oven there, so. Community ed, really preschool and paws is the main piece with the change. And the preschool and paws on the other side too. So money comes in, the money goes out. Capital, E-rate in the scoreboards are kind of the difference as far as the revenue. And again, as the expenditures, again, the E-rate in the scoreboards, the money comes in, the money goes out. Building construction and debt service are pretty much the same as we've expected. Trust fund, the same thing, they usually just use that money to give a few scholarships, they just use the interest. And then the sale of the building is there. And that will remain there until the board makes some decisions about where we put those dollars. So when you take a look at the general fund, and you go further down, it talks about positive or deficit budget by fund. And when you get down to the very end, you'll see the actual fund balance on 6/30/2016, and the estimated fund balance on June 30/2017. We expected the general fund to go up, my budget was built to go up above that amount of money. I think when Joan and I looked at it, we were about $532 off on that. I don't think you're going to get me to get any closer than that. So I think all of these fund balances that we are in the end for June 30th, 2017, what we're projecting, were very close to each other. I think the furthest one we were off was about $30-some thousand. Part of that was for the tech levy, because we just spent more money, you know, I knew we were going to go on that. And also some of our capital, we were off about the same, because some things came up and we needed to pay for them. But otherwise, all the other accounts are about within $4,000, $5,000 of what we projected. If I can do that for you every year, I'll be happy camper. So really, it has worked very much like we had projected it would work.
Good job.
So I'm happy on this one, I really am. So unless there's any questions for this, we'll bring this back at the next meeting. Certainly, I would say that if you have no questions now, but something pops into your head after you look at it, just give me a call, we'll get you an answer. And we can certainly bring that same answer and question back to the next board meeting. But I will ask for approval at the first meeting in June.
You've done a really good job of getting this under control and watching that budget for us, so thank you very much.
It's been an effort by a lot of people to do this, so we're happy that it's going the way it is, you know, and now we're planning for next year. Any other questions?
All right, we'll move on to the addition of the agenda. We're in the business review and discuss the Painesville area school partnering with Painesville area foundations for the 2017 gala. I think we have Lou. Here?
I didn't share the information, we'll talk about it right here. It went on the agenda because, oh, not too long ago, I got a call from the Foundation Committee, and they asked if we would be interested in partnering with them for the gala. This isn't something necessarily I'm asking the board to give permission, but I want, as informational, certainly if there's some concerns on the part of the board, then we would certainly address those concerns. But the gala committee, well, really the foundation itself, that committee has, after discussion, has kind of offered us the ability to partner with them for the gala for 2017 in September, I believe, if I'm not mistaken. And we're really excited, I know that, I asked Bruce to step in, and also Randy, I think, was there just because they wanted a couple of board representatives. And it's really an opportunity for us, I think, we've talked about CEIS or CTE grants, or not grants, but programs. We had a lot of discussion about what dollars that we get from the gala could be used for. Nothing has been formulated and said at this point. You know, it gets to be over $20,000, we're hoping, but $20,000 can be spent very quickly. So we really want to focus in on what specifically we want. But it's kind of CTE programs were discussed, so we're kind of looking at that theme. But a lot of discussion has to take place. We want to get a number of people involved in narrowing the focus on that. And I just told my administrators the other day after the meeting, so we have not meant to have a discussion about what we would foresee or recommend that the focus be. In the meantime, we also have a lot of work to do. There is a number of things that we need to start getting ready for, from helping to sell tickets, to advertising, to PR on this event, all of those types of things. So there's quite a bit of work to do, but also the rewards are outstanding. And from my perspective, I'm certainly recommending to the board that we partner with them. I think we're really excited about it.
Thank you.
Yes.
Now, we have a special focus on which games to pick, and that's what you're selling CTEs, right? We have a couple of donors that folks who are interested in that, and I told you, possibilities of them also putting in additional donations to do this trade. But it gives you a chance to kind of market yourself, and it's a good place to do that, eventually. It's a good place to kind of be able to market yourself and what you're doing, and you're going to highlight what you're doing and what you want to do.
And PR certainly has been an issue, and there'll be PR involved with this. And it is a great opportunity for us to highlight some of the great things that we're doing, and hopefully do some additional things that the district would like to do.
I was impressed that they came to us, and they were interested in the trade, a part of it. We've had a lot of information out about what we're trying to do, and how we're trying to make it better. It just looked like a very interesting thing, where a group outside of our school is coming to us and wanting to team up to make us successful in however we want to do this. And like Bob said, we have a lot of things funnily together, but I was very impressed. We didn't go ask them for the money.
And I think it fits so well into what we've continued to say, that we need a strong school to have a strong community, and a strong community to have a strong school. And this time apart, this type of partnering does nothing but foster that. And I think in the end, we both benefit from this type of opportunity.
We need to know more soon from you, because we have to start getting our act together, start making our presentations, and getting ready to get nailed down with the elements of giving this.
And that's really, you know, they have timelines to make, and we'll have some timelines now if we agree to go down this road. But again, I just think it's such a wonderful opportunity for us. So it's not something we need board approval for. So if there are any concerns, certainly get ahold of me, but if I don't hear buy from anybody by tomorrow, I'm making a phone call. Unless you're all willing to commit to me right now, I suppose I could put you all on the spot and say we'd like to make this the focus. I'm certainly recommending it, I think it's a great opportunity for us.
Yeah.
Then they just saved me a phone call, we're excited.
I think it's great.
We don't get that many opportunities that somebody's going to come up and help us represent, you know, some of the things in the school. It's just nice to have community members be thinking out of the box and saying how this year could work, because I know I've been to a couple of galas and for different things and stuff like that. So this is a new twist, and it's a new venue, and it's exciting, I think, that you guys are even entertaining that possibility for partnering with us, you know, so I just think it's going to be an exciting way.
Yeah, and I think, I think it's great, because I did not realize that the school had never partnered with the foundation on this. So it's a great opportunity for us.
Sticks in my mind, the most important thing, and every time I go to the conferences, the school board conferences down in Minneapolis, everything, they all talk about the schools working with the community. And this is it, this is what it is, and we're working together. They're asking, or offering us to get involved, but they're also asking us to be involved in putting this together. We may end up selling some tickets, and that kind of thing to assist them in this process. And I just think it's a really nice thing. Nice that your group thinks about that and is bringing it forward, because what we need is, we have to be a community, we have to be on the same team. All of the public, all of everybody needs to be working with us at the school, and our outcome hopefully will be a good education for the kids, and trade oriented. I think right now, in Industrial Park, plus many of the people in the trades learned it in their high school. So we have lots of carpenters that learned it here. We have lots of people out in Industrial Park that started here, with guys like Roy Nach and Len Scholling in the building, Stan Yarmin in automotive. I remember all of that. And lots of those people are community members and actively involved today.
And from my point, I really appreciate you coming to us now, because there are a lot of things that need to get done on both of our sides. So for us to know now is a great advantage for us to start even looking at things before the end of the school year.
And tomorrow, we're, Mike is coming here from the press, and we're going to start highlighting the grants that against the two of the school, and hopefully to tie them in separate ways, so we can really just start to celebrate the great things that happen in our community. Because our goal is really to lay donors' narrative to the needs. There's 532 students that go to school, and that's a really big outreach for us, and it's a win-win, so I'm so excited to be here.
Well, I can tell you too, we're awfully excited also, and we do appreciate it, we really do. We think it's a great opportunity for both of us.
Do you have a date for the gala?
Saturday, September 23rd is a great one, I've said, it's very long. And it's going to be a little mysterious.
Good, because I forgot to ask that question, because that increases the seating capacity, I think, quite a bit.
I think that's a great idea, that was really fun last year.
I think Bruce is so excited, he's probably going to make one of those big, one of that, you going to the auction again? I'll bet he'll put a big bid in. So excited.
Think of all your friends who have capacity to, I think, help.
We're excited, thank you so much.
All right, so with that note, which is really a good note right now, we're going to move on to personnel. Review and consider approval of the resignation of Brooke Wertz, paraprofessional, effective May 31st, 2017.
Yeah, we certainly appreciate the work that Brooke has done for us, she just has another opportunity, and is moving on, so.
So what?
A motion from Cheryl.
Second.
Second from Randy. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Number two, review and consider approval of Joan Vonnegut as an integrationist program paraprofessional, July 11th, 2017 through August 10th, 2017.
This is Melrose's summer's program that we have a paraprofessional go down, drives our students, and then stays down there and helps with the piece. It's our contribution to the program.
I'll move.
Got a motion from Rick.
Second.
Second from Cheryl. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Informational reports, food service, or food service negotiations, Bruce?
If you don't mind, I'll put one and two together. Both of them are going very well. I commend our superintendent again, because they've been really interesting discussions where everybody is out, totally on the table, we're talking full open about all the issues involved, but I think they're going very nicely. Again, we're waiting a little bit to try and see where the state's at, but I'd say they're progressing well.
It'll get more interesting once the state determines what's going to happen.
What we don't get.
I'm hoping that's not the case, but we'll see.
All right, so let's move on to number three, district-wide technology committee.
I think our focus remained on the technology piece, the one-to-one initiative, some of the things that we need to get ready and move forward. We're still waiting for the bids. One of the interesting things that we did, we did talk about, remember when I asked the students if they thought that the touchscreen was important, and the students said no? I think the technology committee has a different view on that, because what they foresee coming up are many apps that really do include and that are needed by that touchscreen. So a part of what they feel is that the students don't know what they don't know. And because the new apps are going to come out that will integrate that, it will certainly be something that we'll have a discussion about before we make the determination. We're waiting for the cost, the new cost to come in, which will probably come in sometime in June or first part of July.
Do they know what kind of apps that would be?
When Garrett talks, and Garrett certainly knows more about it, and he would have been here today, so he'll get to the next meeting so that we can have more discussion about this. He's at the track meet tonight, and I think they have bought everybody that's walking that would help to get at that track meet tonight. But I think he can give you a lot more discussion about that. So I'd rather, I think, I won't do it justice, Garrett will, so when he comes at the next meeting, he'll be able to discuss that, and you'll be able to ask all those questions about what he perceives on that. But he certainly believes strongly that we better have a discussion about that, that the kids, once they figure out how to use it, and what it can be used for, it might be an important piece for them. So, but again, we're going to wait for the cost to come out, that's a factor. If it's twice as much to have it, that will answer our questions, but if it's not much to have it, then it's something worth discussing. So we'll see, no decision has been made at this point.
All right, that's fair, I'm prepared.
Just a few things, enrollment has remained pretty consistent throughout the year. We really didn't lose anybody, we're about up one student. So it really has remained consistent for us. Courtyards, we did add those tables that we had talked about, so they've had it, although the students really haven't had a lot of good weather to use them, I don't think. But they are there for the students to use, and I think that it's been a great thing for them. Just a reminder, the graduations this Sunday, May 28th, 2 o'clock, high school gym. Okay, if you're not going to be there, please let me know, so that I can let the people who are planning that. Baseball playoffs start on Saturday, all right? In fact, I think they play the team they're playing yet this week, maybe it's tonight that they're playing them. So, and then they turn around, they play the same team on Saturday. Two games, I believe, will take place. If you lose your first one, I believe you're out. Bids for the elementary school on the window piece came in underbid by about $20,000. That gives us a little bit of wiggle room, because once you start tearing into things, you never know what will happen. So they are ordering the windows and everything else, and the windows are not sliders, they will tip in, not very far, but they will come into the classroom. I know that the board had some concerns about sliders not working very well. We think they're a high-quality window, and, you know, we'll move everything against the wall, and we'll do as much as we can, but in the end, it will be a very quick project. They're ordering everything so that once they start on those windows at the elementary school, they can kind of take out and replace as they're going. And that's why they need to wait till probably mid-July, and then it'll be done right at the start of the school year. We're hoping by the time the teachers get in, but might have to struggle through that a little bit, but we're certainly, at least right now, predicting we'll have it done by the time the students start. So we're excited about that, so that'll get done.
Do we have a drawing or a sketch or anything what it's going to look like?
They all went to the MDE. I can certainly, I don't know if we did necessarily a drawing, we know what materials we're using, all of that, but the more I use my architect...
It'll kind of look like what it does right now with new windows?
Yes.
And then it'll be like a siding of some sort?
It'll be a metal...
That yellow stuff?
No, it'll be a metal siding, everything will be re-sided all the way down the wall, so you won't see any of the current plexiglass or glass, whichever one it is. The only thing, it'll be solid except for the windows, where now you can look through the one piece to see the backboard, you won't be able to see any of that.
So they've taken out what used to be windows that we have kind of tucked in or just covering it?
They're tearing it all out.
Okay.
That was part of the...
I know you talked about that at one time.
Yeah, we thought we would be able to do it a lot cheaper by not doing that, but when we started looking into it and checking with things, we were concerned with condensational curany between the pieces. If we didn't, and that's the last thing where we want, that's where mold comes in, that's where all that comes in. So all of it's coming out and be put back in.
And we're going to have decent insulation, so it actually should cut down the cost of heating those rooms a little bit.
Yes, it should keep it more comfortable, but in the end, you know, it's partly for the looks and the issue that all of that plexiglass or glass has to do, and part of it, we do gain some energy. But I tell you that that will pay for itself? No, it won't, that's not accurate. But it will still help somewhat.
It should be less drafty.
Yes.
That will help for the students.
Yeah, I think it'll be much, much nicer, we wouldn't be doing it if we didn't think so. But it's been approved by MDE, because all plans went there, so everything is in motion now, they've started to order the stuff that we need. Okay, let's see, continue to work on next year's budget, it's difficult until we find out what's going on with the state. So until the state finishes their budget, it kind of puts the negotiations on hold to some degree, but hopefully, if they do what they say they're going to do by Wednesday of next week, it should be all completed. We'll see, that's all I can say. Next board meeting, we'll be bringing forward our recommendation for any reductions. I've mentioned to the board that there really will not be much of any reductions for next year, so I'm happy about that. But we'll have the first reading of that, and then that'll also get approved by the board. We're still working on our liability insurance, I can only tell you it's been a journey. I'm glad we don't have to do it every year. And then the facilities meeting is tomorrow at 6:00 in the elementary school conference room. And just a reminder, that is again, a special board meeting, we're going to have the facility committee kind of sit up front, guests sit in the back, and we'll just continue our discussion.
Are we going to have an agenda for this meeting?
For this meeting, it's pretty hard, I think, we kind of ended where we ended last time, a little quicker than we would have liked. So I think we just need to discuss what we want to do next, that's really the piece that we need to talk about and have some open discussion for. We just kind of got to that point when we had to close the meeting last time, and so we'll kind of probably just start back to where we were a little bit, and then move forward. It's really about where do we want to go from here? You know, what do we want to do? I mean, if there isn't a lot of support, then that answers our question. If there's quite a bit of support, then I guess the question becomes what is the next question then, and when? You know, so I think all of those questions have to be discussed, and they have to be answered. Certainly at this point, there's been no decision made one way or another, whether we will or we won't. You know, we've gathered some information from the community, so I think we have some of their thoughts. But at the same time, we still need to look at all the facts and say, are we going to, are we not, are we interested? If yes, what will it be, and when will it happen? And that's a lot of decision-making just with those few questions. So it's going to be a little open-ended, at least tomorrow, until we decide where we want to go from there. I don't feel comfortable making that decision for the committee.
Yeah, and I'm okay with that, it's just sometimes agendas make it flow a little smoother, and you get all the meetings, and you didn't forget anything that we were going to talk about, we didn't get to.
I can certainly put an agenda together with the questions that I have and the discussions that we need to have, that's our problem.
I would think that would be wise, personally, just so you have, well, you're the chairperson, so at least you have a guideline of what we're trying to cover there. Not that we're heading in anything a certain direction, but with questions or something on it, so at least we'll move along that list.
Yeah, I can put an agenda together, it's just going to be a fairly open-ended agenda, because nothing has been decided.
I think we should bring up all the topics that were discussed, you know, the six or seven that we came up with, and then start diving into those six and seven. up with, and then start diving into those six and seven questions and see once you how far we want to dissect those, and then figure out which direction we're going to go. Because we need, that's kind of the platform, I think, of all the facilities, is that document that we got all that information from.
Yep.
So if you have those things on the agenda, and then start talking about what each item is about, what is, you know, what is other things within that title that we might need to be defining a little bit more? And then from there, then we can kind of come up with what is it, what direction? Because that's still quite a bit of the material or information that we even got from the first initial people.
And we had just, we just kind of got to that point a little bit, or getting there when things were shut down, so.
But I suppose that we could, for all practical purposes, if we would start with those as the agenda items, and say, let's talk about these agenda items, and see once where it goes to, and basically have some guidance on, you know, the topic itself and what other things there could potentially be with that, and then move on to the next one. And then at least that we can kind of break each one of them down into a subsection of some sort maybe, and say, okay, now where do we go from there? Which animal do we want to direct from that? I don't know. I don't know what Jay guys is talking about.
I'm game for that. I just, for me, I'm a great one for getting a whole bunch of topics, and then forget one that we were supposed to talk about because we didn't have written down. I just think you do just a lot better job if you have a list.
And I think that list is already defined, we just need to now break that down into a little bit more, because I don't want to, I wouldn't want to go off of that, you know, too far to figure out, you know, because this is...
Public directives to that list.
Yes, exactly. So we don't want to get onto a binge where we're going to be talking about something totally different, you know, or whatever, you know, so. Because I still think this is going to be a long process still to go through all this.
Oh yeah, it'll be a long time.
Okay. Any other guidance that the board would like to give me? Otherwise, I will put that together.
That's all I have. Okay. Any other board sharing information?
I did attend the 13th Annual Painesville Area FFA Spring Recognition Banquet on Sunday. It was a barbecue and potluck, wonderful food, wonderful conversation with a lot of kids, in fact, the parents. And I picked up the National FFA Organization Agricultural Education recognition to the Painesville Area High School School Board certificate. On behalf of our school board.
Yeah, I would really recommend, they always do a wonderful job with this banquet. I would recommend that if you haven't, the next time it rolls around, if you're free to stop by, they just do an outstanding job.
So many awards and demonstrations, and it was, it was great.
Well, I think there's just more about it. I know we had honors banquet last Sunday night also, and there was a nice presentation from a gentleman from the area for the FFA to one of our students. And it was really neat to see that, that whole thing actually living and breathing more than I think it has been in the past.
They're really a well-organized group, and you will be amazed, you know, whether it be the honor society, or the top students that we honored, or the FFA kids, they do an amazing job. So just saying, if you get a chance, well worth your time and effort to go.
It was outstanding.
Good, thank you, Cheryl. Any other sharing?
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, I suppose we could. We had a motion from Lou and a second from Randy. Any other further discussion?
Second from Rick.
Oh, from Rick, I'm sorry, I thought it was Randy. Sorry, Randy. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signified by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried.